With that, we have 6:30. We have all the Monday, February 27th, City Council meeting for the City of Mayor to order, please. If we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. With that, we have any additions to the agenda?
One addition to the agenda, Mayor. I received an application for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license from Trinity Lutheran. This will be for April 15th at Mayor Lutheran High School for their Trinity Legacy of Learning event. And I would recommend placing that under consent.
All right. With that, I'll look for motion to approve the agenda with the one addition of 9B for the temporary on-sale liquor license for Trinity Lutheran. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Now, we're open for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll move to consent. Is there anything to poll or further discuss on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda with the one update of 9B.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries 4-0. That will take us to the public hearing on the proposed street maintenance plan.
The proposal here on the street maintenance plan, we have Todd Hagan with us, our financial advisor from Ellers.
Public hearing. I'm sorry. Should I open the public hearing first?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing at 6:32. Todd, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members, staff. So, Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates, I was here in January, January 23rd, where I presented pre-sale reports and for a fraction of $775,000 of street reconstruction plan bonds. And so, we have two waiting departments that already can get that we see those bonds. We're not slated to sell until April 10th on this. So, we've got a, what we call a street reconstruction plan in front of the council. It was also on file.
There we go. It was also on file at City Hall during publication. So, we had the pre-sale on January 23rd. We published the notice. We're here tonight for the hearing and then kind of just going down the line as far as the process. We have a reverse referendum period that needs to end by March 29th. So, you know, the bond sale is off-a-way until April 10th. But we need to kind of go through this plan and hold a hearing and kind of listen to anyone that has any questions or comments that could come from residents or the council or staff or whomever tonight, just to kind of go through that. So, we did, with the help of, with the help of the city staff, put together the plan. It's pretty short and sweet. Talks about the Mill and Overlay project slated for 2023. There's a page in there that lists them. Page three has an estimated cost of $950,000, though the city is gonna contribute some of its own funds, street fund cash to lower the bond issue and some pre-levy funds also and some ARPA funds into this too. So, that brings us down to that 775 figure. There's also a map that's attached to. It's also part of the plan itself that was prepared by Bolton Bank. Kind of talks about where the overlay is in the city. And so, the rest of the plan is pretty much statutory references, things we have to talk about to make the plan legal and proper. And so, again, so I'm here tonight to answer any questions that the council or anybody that's in the audience might have about the plan itself. And after the hearing, then, there is a resolution for the council to consider to kind of move forward just preliminarily with the issuance of the bonds. We're not issuing bonds tonight. You are asked to consider approving the plan tonight to kind of keep things moving forward. So, if you, some of your actions, then you can approve the resolution. You can prove the resolution at a lesser amount. You can deny approval of the resolution. We can table the action tonight. So, you got kind of four things to consider. So, that's, I'm here for any questions or comments from you folks.
Well, first, we'll open up to the public if there's anyone who'd like to come up and make any comments. Seeing none, council, any questions for Todd or any comments? And with that, Nick, were there any written or electronic comments for the record?
There were none.
All right. Anything else? Anything else you need to add last minute?
That's it.
All right.
Again, just kind of a statutory sort of process that we need to go through. And take it away. You bet.
So, with that, at 6:37, we'll close the public hearing. And then, we will look for a motion to approve Resolution 2023-13, which is giving preliminary approval for the issuance of the city's GO Street Reconstruction Plan Bonds in the amount not to exceed $800,000 and adopting the City of Mayor Minnesota Street Reconstruction Plan.
We'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. So, with that, we'll move to number 12 to consider awarding the bid for the 2023 street seal coating.
So, Bolton Bank has returned with three bids for a seal coating to be performed, and that was the seal coating areas that we saw up in here. As part of this, the yellow areas up in here. So, we got three sections there. A little bit of cold water on the west side, field stone up in the northeast. The entirety of that's gonna get done. We gotta patch a little part up in here that didn't get done in 2022, but we'll patch and then seal coat over that. And then, we're doing the south side of Hidden Creek with that area in there. So, return three quotes on that. And that was from Pearson Brothers Allied Blacktop and Asphalt Service Technologies, with Pearson Brothers being the lowest at $105,963.40.
Anything else you need to add, Dave?
No, I think, um, three, five, six contractors, they will work in.
And the low bidder is a good responsible. Perfect. Okay. Then, I'll look for a motion to approve the lowest bid of Pearson's Brothers for $105,963.40.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries 4-0. All right. With that, we can move to number 13. Consider approval of lease agreement for coffee machine.
So, we are now ending on a five-year lease agreement that we have with Coordinated Business Systems. And we currently pay $191.49 per month on that, and that includes service, toner, and maintenance. I've been in discussions with them on an updated lease agreement, and they proposed one. It's, the one we have now is not under the state of Minnesota contract system. The new one is, and that's why you see the price reduction there. We don't have to go out for extra quotes on this because it comes straight from the state bid. So, we're at $191.49 right now, and we'd be looking at about $165.65 per month. That's $132.26 on the base, and we have $17.90 for service. And so, for the current lease, that includes base and service for that $191, just for reference. But one of the key differences is we get 5,000 black and white pages per month. We'll never come close to utilizing all of that. But under our current contract, we do get a color allowance. However, in the state contract, there is no color allowance. So, that's where we have to do a little bit of extra work to see what that's like. So, last year, we had, we averaged 865 color pages per month. Janelle and I have talked, and it's a simple matter, just switching a lot of what we do to black and white versus printing in color. And a lot of that can be brought down. So, we're confident we can really bring that down. So, we figured about half on that. If we can do better, hey, great. But we figure half we can easily do. So, that's about $15.49 per month for color usage. That brings us to the $165.65 per month for the proposed lease. So, the average monthly savings would be $25.84 or $310.8 per year. And this would be a five-year lease agreement, and the price is locked in for five years.
And this is still, excuse me, even though we have state bid aspects of this, it's still through Coordinated Business Systems?
Yep. Similar to how you buy equipment on state bid, but you get it from Lano Equipment or somewhere else. Similar to that.
Any other questions for city administrator? That, I'll look for a motion to approve quote GD-005 from Coordinated Business Systems.
I'll make that motion.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Take us to city council reports. Councilmember Ely, anything to report on?
Not at this time.
Mr. McNeely?
Nope.
Let's remember, help.
Nope.
And me and the city administrator and Chief Metzl met with Ridgeview this morning to go over some options. Still, to get Ridgeview moved in, we think we've got a couple of great ideas. We got certainly the fire department's input, Ridgeview's input, and we should have more coming before long on some final recommendations for that. So, and I believe that's my only meeting since then. So, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, Todd. Okay, with that, we'll jump, we'll open the February 27th workshop meeting.
All right. Get some things up. So, in the workshop for tonight, we're discussing a potential amendment to the fire department policy to allow for a tiered para statewide volunteer firefighter credit accrual and college student category. Then, we'll be moving on to golf cart ordinance and kind of surprised Kat's not here. I sent her an email, but maybe she couldn't make it. And then, just an update on presenting the splash pad design, going over that just at a public meeting here. So, Andy and I have been discussing potential amendment to the fire department policy. And right, so it really revolves around the accrual of para statewide volunteer firefighter retirement credits. Years, some years ago, I think it was 2019, did you guys switch over to para? Earlier than that? Okay. And we was sooner than that. So, prior to that, the fire department managed its own retirement funds. And then, fire departments have the option of opting into para, which is what a lot of the public employees are a part of the statewide retirement system. So, they get to be a part of that, and then the state investment board then invests those funds as part of their total portfolio statewide. And that usually has pretty good returns. And it relieves the fire departments from having to do those investment duties. So, that's the retirement accrual credits that we're talking about. And so, each year, the fire chief fills out a form that goes to para for each firefighter that says, how many credits out of the year did they accrue? And that's generally left up to each fire department to dictate how that gets accrued. So, in ours right now, they have to make these attendance goals. 25% at all calls, 50% attendance at all work details, fundraisers, open houses, and then 75% attendance at all general meetings. So, if they achieve all these, then they get 100% of the credit for the year. However, if they fall below, then they're at risk of receiving no credit for the year. And Andy and I were talking about this in relation to a college student that we have that's a firefighter. They're onto the department, but they don't receive any credit. So, we were talking, and during my time in Fairfax, they had been doing some updates to their policy as well, and they looked at a tiered system of going at this. So, let's say you make 75, you make 50, they make, but you don't quite make your 25. Well, instead of getting nothing, you can receive a prorated amount instead of receiving nothing. And the reason why this came up in Fairfax and then comes over to here is Fairfax is far more rural. There were difficulties keeping people on and still making their requirement. And we weren't having people pounding down the door to get on the department. It was hard to get people. So, the idea was, is instead of them receiving no credit and maybe them leaving the department, even though they weren't at their call rate that they needed to be at, they could earn a prorated amount and still keep them on because they were still attending calls. They just weren't up to the threshold. The idea was, if those people got off, well, where does the work go? To the rest of the fault, to the rest of the firefighters, which means they have to attend even more calls than they're already attending. And if you follow that trend and keep going, well, you could have a lot of burnout going on. That's where it kind of started in Fairfax, and they worked through that. And I had shared that policy with Andy, and Andy took a look, and he liked that, that tiered system. So, that's something we would be looking at mimicking here. We don't exactly have details. We're just bringing it up at this work session and wanted to get council's input on if they thought it was a good thing to pursue. And then, we were looking at the first meeting in March, coming back at a work session with some more details on how that might be stratified. So, that's the first part of it. Then, what it comes into, the college students we have is right now, they're college students. They're only here four months out of the year. They attend what they can attend, but there's absolutely no way they can make the fundraiser amounts. There's no way they can make the meeting, the 50%, the 75%. If they went hard at it, they might be able to get 25 or close. So, that then plays into a category where we could create a firefighter college student. We could exempt them from, say, the general meeting requirements or prorate that category of what they had to attend for the four months they're actually in there. And then, they could earn para credits even while they're in college. And should they come back and work for the hometown, they would already be a firefighter. They would already be earning credit towards retirement. And they're earning it right now. They're earning it. They're going on the calls. They're a full-fledged firefighter. So, when Andy brought that up to me, I said, well, yeah, we could look at it, say a prorated amount like that and see what council thought about it. Andy, anything you want to toss in there on that?
Um, I can, yeah, I can have a few seconds. First of all, I, as far as the tiered thing, I really like that idea just because the way it states right now, you know, if somebody doesn't make that, you know, 25% call volume. You know, I, you have, I got a couple of people that are just below 25%. You know, they make all their meetings. They make, you know, their trainings and stuff like that, but they're kind of below, you know, a little bit below on their call, whether it's just because of their work schedule, everything. I have a hard time saying, no, you don't get, you get zero credit, you know, when it comes to something like that because they still are beneficial to the department. You know, the runs, you know, the calls that they do make it on, things like that. It's a hard time, you know, having such a black and white, yes, you get a full, you know, credit and no, you don't. On the other hand, it's, you know, it's not fair to somebody that is making 75%, you know, of the calls. And, you know, he's getting 100%, but somebody that makes only 20%, you know, of the calls gets that same, you know, that same value. You know, it should, and that's where I like kind of that tiered response. I think, you know, it's rightfully so. If you were only there for, you know, a very small fraction of the stuff versus somebody that's, you know, that person should be, should get more credit than the other. But, you know, so tweaking or making a tiered response for that, I would like that situation. As far as the college thing, I think it's, you know, is a person gonna find many that'll work for? Probably not. But I think those that, you know, you find that that category works for, I think is very beneficial to the city. First of all, you get them when you're young. You get them interested in it. And you hopefully can retain them after college then, instead of them moving away. If, you know, if we bring them on as, right now, what we had done is bring them on as a reserve because it's, you know, they really couldn't make everything, you know, the requirements, but they're on his reserve to get that training. But if they, I mean, we have now a, you know, a person in that situation right now that was brought on as a reserve. But looking at it in the time he was here, made made more percentage of calls than probably, I would say, 35% of my membership in that four-month time that he was around. So, it looks at, he gets zero credit versus that person that was there, you know, got full credit. Now, this situation, it probably wouldn't make a difference in his mind, but in a different situation, it might. You know, they don't get any credit. Well, yeah, I'm doing it this, but why should I stick around? You know? So, I think is doing in something like that, where we do have ways that they can gain their training even while they're away at college. I think we should give them some sort of credit. So, that's where that kind of all came from as well. Any questions on any of it?
When you say tiered, that just means like they, instead of getting a full year's benefit?
Yeah, we would.
They would, you'd get like?
Similar as, you know, if you made, you know, your call, you know, a certain call percentage, you know, certain this, we would do depending on, you know, how much they were able to, you know, actually more or less help the department would determine, you know, what kind of percentage they got. So.
So, this is the one from Fairfax, just to give an example. And here is your, and they had different attendance requirements. So, this just gives you an idea of the structure it could look like. So, theirs was a 30% threshold for everything, whereas ours splits it up between calls, between fundraiser events and things like, things like that, and then meeting attendance. In Fairfax, it was all together on one, but it was 30%. So, that's where they opened up this tiered system like so.
I mean, I like that because I do know that people that might have lower percentages sometimes isn't related to not just coming to calls. It's if the majority of your calls are during the work day or the work week, and that person works out of town, they're never gonna make any calls. And we can go two weeks without one call, and the call is in the middle of the day. Or you can have 10 calls in the middle of the night, and then if you have someone that works nights, they never make the calls.
Oh, it's, yeah. I mean, you've got, I mean.
So, you have such a wide range, and that's why we're paid on call, and that's why you have a larger force because you need people at different times. You know, and then there's people that work in town, and they're gonna make 90% of the calls because they work and live here. They don't leave unless they're going to the grocery store. Just saying.
Yeah, I think we absolutely should look at this. It needs to be looked at. It probably hasn't for quite some time. Excuse me.
And we need new firefighters, and I like the college thing. I think that just.
We got to keep up with times. We got, we need to relook at all policies periodically, no matter what.
Yeah.
I would recommend we have the personnel committee, personnel committee along with Chief Metzl sit down and get a plan together and propose like we would any other policy changes and get a proposal together to bring to council.
Any other questions for me?
This is an annual, this is annual, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, annually, we get a report from para that we need to fill out. And it is with para because I get a report that I gotta fill out, and it'll say, you know, how many months they get credit for, for the year.
Okay.
So, on that tiered system, it would be, you know, where we do that, it'd be very easily like, well, they get, they get nine months' credit.
And you do that at the end of the year.
Yep.
Correct. Okay. So, if we got into May, or we can always go retroactive back.
So, what it, the report I need to fill out for, like, the previous year, I gotta, I gotta have in by the end of March.
For 2022?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So, going into 2023, we could start.
Yeah.
As long as we get it done in 2023, it can go back to January 1st.
I mean, my, the thing, the tiered for the, the department as a whole, I think we adopt something and put it in for motion for this year kind of going forward as, you know, so that people have an understanding. You know, you can't backdate to last year on that. The college thing and the credit for that, you know, do we look at, you know, so that person, would he get credit for this past year or not? You know, that's something we need to determine there and try and determine before I have to send that report on whether we do or we don't.
My ideal goal would be to achieve both recommendations for tiered system and the college system by, for the second meeting in March. That way, the policy gets adopted. Then, before he fills out his report by the end of the month, a tiered system can go and be in place and be retroactive if we have a couple firefighters who aren't quite in there. My goal is to shoot for that.
I guess, yeah, you could look at it, at that because to the letter of law, it's written right now, they'd have zero credit, where this way, they could have a portion of credit.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would recommend personnel committee along with Chief Metzl get a recommendation together and.
Sounds good.
Come back. Any other comments? Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll move to golf cart ordinance.
Move to golf cart ordinance. So, I've prepared the ordinance a bit more. This is not necessarily in final draft format. Wanted to get back in front of you guys for consideration. And so, we do, we did have, well, we do have an ordinance on the books that regulates, excuse me, snowmobiles, wrecked vehicles, all-terrain vehicles. And a lot of the language in there is reflective of the language in State Statute 169, which governs golf carts as well. So, it actually, it was a much easier task of updating things than I was originally thinking. So, in a lot of sections, all I really needed to do was add the phrasing and see that and yell, add the phrase golf carts. So, that would be in the header. And we talked about intent, just adding the phrase golf carts there. Adding a definition of a golf cart, and I pulled this from one of the other cities who had a golf cart ordinance. On a responsible, again, just adding more of that golf cart, adding more of that language to a lot of what's already in the ordinance then applies. And a lot of the existing languages really did help. I added trails for here on places that these vehicles cannot go. That was left out. So, snowmobiles, recreational vehicles, golf carts, and all-terrain vehicles, on public property, playgrounds, parks. I think trails was meant, but it was just left out, and recreation areas. So, trails is on there to be included. to be included.
Where you can't.
Can't.
Okay.
Yep, they can't be in there with those vehicles. Again, adding more of that, um, I added of snowmobile here just to clarify because it's just this operation of minors, but really when you read the language, it's only for snowmobiles that it applies to. So I just added that in the heading just to clarify it, uh, just for clarification sake. Towing, again, just added golf carts, just adding golf cart all throughout. And then we get to the new section seventy-two point one-two, which is golf cart specific regulations. And this is, comes from what we had talked about last time. Driver's license is required, um, have to have a driver's license, uh, minimum age is sixteen for operating. You have to have a permit, and that's by state law, you have to have a permit. Grabbed information we're gonna want on that golf cart permit for all those things, name, owner, address, date of birth, contact info, copy of driver's license, make, model, year, and then proof of insurance. Pretty basic stuff on that. Permit fee will be established by ordinance of the city council. That's why I held off. We had discussions about the amending the fee for liquor licenses. I didn't bring it up for introduction at this meeting because I knew we might be talking about this, so I didn't want to like amend and then a month later amend again. So we can wrap it all up into one. Then, uh, having permits to be renewed annually, uh, and they'll all expire on the thirty-first of each year, so they'll all be in one bulk cycle.
Did we talk about having the sheriff is the one that approves the mirror and the headlights, or you guys are approving that?
Either could. Uh, we could have the sheriff take a look at it just to make sure all the equipment on there is that's needed. And that's where we get the additional equipment. They have to have slow-moving emblem, that's by state law. Rearview mirrors are by state law. Headlights, taillights, rear-facing brake lights, and turn signals were at the recommendation of the sheriff's department.
And I recall Brad at the time said that, that was something that he could handle.
Yep.
I recall.
Yep. We're likely not gonna get a flood of a hundred people wanting golf carts. We'll get five, six. It'll just be a quick renewal. Once the initial is done, they'll be like, oh, back again this year. I got the same golf cart and same everything. All right, here's a renewal. As long as that's all fine.
Could you scroll back up to where you talked about the park, the trail, and then the trails and where they can't, can't, they can't be in parks?
Yep. So this section here, except as specifically permitted and authorized in this chapter, it is unlawful for any person to operate a snowmobile, wreck vehicle, golf cart, or ATV within the limits of the city. On state highway twenty-five, they can't do it on there, on any public street except in the following circumstances, and only these two apply to the exception. Otherwise, it goes back to C, D, E, F, and G are where they can't.
Do we see it? Just trying to think of the trails, just for golf carts. Obviously, snowmobiles, ATVs and UTVs are different, but with golf cart, golf carts being a lot slower, and if they want to get like from Coldwater up to the gas station. I mean, do we, do we see a problem with them on the trails, or what, what would be the problem? They're slower moving, so I'd rather almost have them from a safety perspective, have them on that trail than out on a road, you know, out on the roads.
Well, they can't be on thirty, so they can't.
They can cross over, they.
Oh, I guess the what then? So they'd have to cross over.
Oh, yeah.
Hidden Creek.
And then cross over.
And then come down. I mean, do we care? Do we care for just the golf carts?
Well, let's think about it because someone from Fieldstone, there's.
They can go through sixty-second.
Well, no, they can't.
Because they can't go on their trail.
They're very limited.
Well, they are.
Well, no, they could go from Fieldstone down sixty-second through Lutheran High.
Right, but then how do they, or they, but they couldn't get to Casey's because you'd have to go on twenty-five.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I guess, unless we get a, unless we're gonna get a super flood of permits wanted, I wouldn't see a problem with allowing it on the trails. If, if, now, if we get, if we start getting, you know,
Problems.
A hundred permits, now there could be problems. You know, we might have to change things, but for right now, I wouldn't see an issue.
Yeah, because a person from Fieldstone would not be able to get to Casey's because they can't go on the county road or twenty-five, and there's no crossing over unless they did the trail right here that went through Coldwater, you crossed over thirty into Hidden Creek, and then crossed over twenty-five to Casey's. Does that make sense? There, otherwise you have to do county roads, because I only know this because when I ride an ATV, I, or my UTV, I can't go twenty-five, I have to go on the county roads, and then go through the neighborhoods to get to Casey's, because I can't, I'm not allowed on twenty-five.
Even no, no one could even get to City Hall, could they?
My, my understanding is also that, uh, the county.
Well, not from over there.
But from anywhere, where, where could anyone?
Well, you can cross twenty-five.
If they live maybe in historic, historic here, they could get, but let's say someone in Hidden Creek.
Because this road, is that a county, this is, is this considered a county?
Yes.
Yeah, so they can't, yeah, they, nobody would be able to get here. Except for Ridge.
People might want to come up, watch ballgames, might want to come up and use the pavilion, might want to come up in the future splash pad. Seems like a good vehicle to kind of bring the kids up and.
So, but though, then we're gonna have to put signs up on all the trails.
Well, we have no motorized. We would have to change them.
Yep.
All golf carts allowed.
Except golf carts.
Yeah. And it's just a thought. I don't.
No, but I don't think.
I'm not against it.
I'm not, but I don't, because there's no way people can get to all sections of the town without following.
Or it's not just a cruise around your neighborhood either. I don't, I haven't talked to anyone who has one either, so I don't know what.
But you're exactly right with Blue Jay being a county road, thirty being a county road, and twenty-five being a state highway, you can't travel along those. You can cross them, but you can't travel with them.
But the baseball games at Lutheran High, I, I could, you know, I could see it, people using them all over.
No, anybody from Hidden Creek could not get over to City Hall.
Right.
At all. There's no way. I can't get, if I went, I couldn't get to Casey's, you know, from.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Ridge Road, I can't, I can't get to Casey's, the fire department, or Hidden Creek. But I can get, and I couldn't even go to Coldwater. I could only go to Fieldstone.
You could cross here.
Yeah, but how do I get there from my house way over here on Ridge Road?
Yeah.
I can't. So then what's the point of a golf cart if you really can't access?
All three or all four.
All the areas in, within the city because of the, the county roads that we intersect.
So I talked with Kat a little bit about this too, because I was looking at this more as a, as I was delving into it, I'm like, okay, things are pretty segmented out. So I brought that up to her and see if that made any difference to her, and she says, no, I can just travel around my own development and hang out with friends I have in my development. It's okay if I'm landlord.
Maybe we go as it is now, and if we get more pushback, then we can expand it too.
Is there some kind of variance or anything we can do, like for part of the trail from like Coldwater Crossing to get to like here or City Hall? Like for, just for that trailhead part?
Trails that we would need it for. It would be, it would be City Hall one.
Because wouldn't, wouldn't the.
Would be, would be the only trail that we would be, need to allow access because otherwise everybody, that, that's the connector. I just have to go from my house, which is on Ridge Road, crossing over, I go down the trail, I go into Coldwater, I cross over thirty, and I can get to every section except for the lumberyard.
Like I said, maybe they don't care. Maybe people don't want to use it for that. Maybe we, maybe we just do this for a year. And then if we.
See, yeah, let's see how it goes.
Back and then open it up. Then we don't have to invest in signage if it's not needed.
Well, my guess is people are probably gonna go on twenty-five.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, like.
We'll let the sheriff, yeah, sheriff, sheriff will have, have to handle that then.
Yeah, sheriff's gotta handle that.
Right. Oh. That would be the, that would be the only one that would, the only trail that technically you would need access to.
I just, you're gonna run into problems like if people are biking one way and the golf carts, those trails aren't wide enough for passing.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Hoping out of common courtesy, I mean, I hope they can figure that. That's why I didn't say UTVs or ATVs, they can get up to fifty miles an hour. We don't want to whip them through the park. Well, some can now, but I'm hoping most don't have those kind of cars.
So in the ordinance,
Right.
Where's the fifteen mile per hour?
No, I saw it in there.
There's the whole stink of PDF now. And I saw it, and at some point it said fifteen miles an hour, and I can't remember exactly where it was.
It was, I saw it.
Well, you know how, how fast they come down twenty-five, it's way more than thirty. There had to have been a semi doing at least fifty. Coming.
There it is, yeah. That was right under trails.
Well, I, I mean, I think we leave it with that, and then if people come and say like, I can't get anywhere, like, I got a golf cart for this purpose, and now I can't get anywhere in the city.
Well, you're probably also gonna have the people that aren't gonna read this and are just gonna go wherever they want to go with it.
Yeah, I think we go, after rethinking, I think we go with this for a year.
Part about that is, we can reach out to them.
Right.
We saw you on the trail, we need, if it's six people a year, that's a pretty short list of people to call.
Right.
If one out of those six say.
Yeah, this is getting in the right direction, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
I like what I'm reading.
All right. Eric, any other comments on it for now?
Yeah.
All right, splash pad. I just, uh, the formal public priest, kind of presentation of the splash pad. And so, um, the Parks Committee has looked at this, uh, so this is our three-D renderings of the proposed splash pad. See if I can't. Not cheap either.
No.
Only about a half million.
Right.
Well, that's why we're applying for the grant too, so. This one, yeah, there we go. So this is more of the, uh, technical design of it. Uh, so we're looking at about thirty-two hundred square feet total for the design. All the play features that have been selected were the ones that the park, uh, board went through. They did some of their, uh, voting for that, uh, before I got here. So those have all been incorporated. Um, there's even some in here where it's just kind of a, just a nozzle that's gonna go on top because it's plug and play.
I was just gonna say, they're interchangeable, so.
Yep.
We can switch them out in ten years for something new or.
Yep. Yep, so you just unbolt it, take it off, throw the new structure on, and then uses the same interface for it.
Is the plan still to have it like to the?
Yeah, to the north. So, yeah, here you can see the, this is the rendering of the pavilion in the corner here, so it would join to it, and then it would come off to the north side of that. So it'd go towards City Hall more.
I like it.
And then we're also looking at, uh, making, so that's the splash pad. We'll have lime, we're actually gonna be adding in here, I've had them add a concrete barrier. That's gonna start and taper around the outside of the limestone and then taper back in. Just gonna make a life a whole lot easier for public works. They don't have to weed whip, you're not gonna have kids tracking mud in if they sit down, things of that nature.
Right.
So limestone will sit on top of a concrete pad just to make that really easy. Another rendering from another direction.
Looks like there's buildings, like.
Right?
Like, like a metropolitan, like, buildings in the back.
There really grew, look at the skyscrapers.
That's the mayor twenty forty comp plan. Yeah, almost. All the trees too, we're gonna plant those, um, as well.
But then they were talking like on the outskirts that later on, putting some little pads with like the cloth triangle coverings and little picnic areas and stuff for family.
Oh, yeah, for shade and more additional seating.
Right. So you could really enjoy a day in the park.
I, I, and it would bring a, a lot of people to mayor that aren't, that don't come here.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I know a lot of people go to like Delano or Cologne.
They're the two closest.
Yep.
I think this would be very popular.
Right adjacent to the park shelter, so if anybody does need shade, you know, they could certainly swing in there.
Right.
Bathrooms are all right there. Mechanical room's already being set up for it in the pavilion.
Maintenance free.
Thought about just doing regular benching, and then we're looking at examples and, you know, the limestone blocks just is nice.
So when you say, you're saying maintenance free, like what does that mean?
Oh, like in this, you can see you have grass.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Around here, or a taper of concrete around the whole thing.
Well, yeah, but it's not a wood picnic table that has to be replaced or a wood bench.
Okay, yeah.
Or a bench that's gonna get so hot, you're probably not gonna sit on, or, I mean, the rocks can get probably pretty hot in July, but.
And then how much maintenance or work will it be for like our public works team?
They'll have to check on it daily, just to make sure flows are happening and you're.
And the on-call person would be checking it on the weekends?
Uh, you could probably get away not checking it on the weekends. So these play features will be button activated, so they're not running twenty-four seven. You go out there and you hit a button to actually activate the water feature.
Really?
It'd be on a timer.
Can it be on a motion sensor? Seems like it defeats the purpose, like you're in a shower or something. Whereas if, as long as you're running around, whoosh, it sprays you with water.
Washing sensor struck in animals in there and the.
And that's, but I think that'll be shut off in the evening.
The, the common design for these are push button, you get like.
Really?
Yeah, the kid, I think the, the Delano one, the kids go up and they hit the button, and they have to like physically go do it on some of them because it'll turn off. And I know my kids, they loved it.
Love turning it on.
It would turn, oh, yeah, they'd run up and dart towards it and turn it on.
And then it would be like on a timer where that like, at night, it, you cannot operate it.
Yeah, it's switched off at night, yeah.
It's recycled.
Exactly as much as the kids hit the button for.
It's a recycled system.
It'll use water, but it'll go into a drain area in the center, and then it'll get pumped back through.
Yep, and filtered and.
Is it, is it treated then in that process?
Yep, it's recycled, filtered.
What happens when it rains? Does it overload the system?
No, there's a, so there's a sump discharge where if they, there's a, gonna be an in-ground tank, and you can't see it on these designs, but there's an in-ground tank that'll have a, a leveling system, so if it has more than that, it'll discharge out to a sump, and it'll just drain.
I figured that's whatever, but I was just trying to.
Right behind that south, southwest of the.
And this grant, explain this grant, like there's grants out for splash pads?
So the DNR has what's called the Outdoor Recreational Grant Program. That's been in existence for many years, and splash pads are an eligible cost item for this, as well as is the ADA trail improvements that we're looking at, we're looking at doing anyway to the trail. So I'm gonna throw that in the grant proposal because that grant likes to see ADA improvements. We've just built a pavilion that'll provide ADA access.
We need that hill slope changed.
Yep, so we're gonna normally just pay for that out of pocket ourselves, but we can throw it in the grant and see if we can get, can't get that half paid for. So the grant provides, if you're successful, provides up to one to one dollar match, up to three hundred and fifty thou, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of grant. So you need seven hundred thousand dollars worth of project expense to get to three fifty. But if you do five hundred, you're eligible for up to two fifty, half and half up to that threshold. Anything over that, you don't get additional grant dollars.
This is exciting. I mean, this is, I mean, it's really cool to see the pavilion now that the structure's there.
A lot bigger.
Much larger than a person sees in a drawing. You're like, oh, really? That's all, and then you see it going up, it's like, whoa.
No, I'm glad this is a long time coming, a long time.
So hopefully we get that grant because that'll pay for half of all of this. If we don't get it, the project gets delayed a year. So we just don't have the money out of pocket to pay for it ourselves. And it's a competitive grant, so there's no guarantee, but it, it's generally open every single year. So we can apply for it if we don't get it, apply for it the next year, apply. So we can apply for it if we don't get it, apply for it the next year, apply for it the next year, whatever it takes.
And you apply in March, right? Is that what you said?
End of March is the deadline, and I'm going to have it put together here in the next couple of weeks. Because they will give you, if you submit it. By early March, they will do a draft review, and they'll send back notes of where you can make improvements on the grant application. So I've, I've applied to this grant program when I was in, can be applied for it three times. Was successful those three times, now don't set yourself up here. In Fairfax, I applied for it twice and didn't get it, but there are some other circumstances there. This seems pretty darn competitive. Splash pads are explicitly spelled out as one of the eligible items. And I think with the pavilion having gone in, with the new bathrooms, and the ADA accessibility with the trail. It's got a lot of good things going for it. So. It'll be successful.
Here's going to be on the map in Carver County.
I think it looks.
I only took forty years living here.
If you think about it next weekend, thanks, thank the public, or the Park and Rec Committee for all their work on this.
Yeah.
They've done a great job. All right, with that then. We are adjourned. Thank you.